We'll start with roll call of members. Matt Yeton, myself, present. Susan Wood.
Present.
John Crist is, um, not absent, excused tonight. Phil Lammerow is excused. Michael Bouchard.
Present.
Molly McCann.
Here.
Neil MacGyver is absent. Zach Tyrell.
I am here.
Bradford Puffer is excused. All right, we'll move on to the review of minutes. We do have a full board. Can we see any alternates? Actually, we don't have any alternates now. Thank you.
Just me and...
Except for Zach.
Which will be, yeah. Perfect. All right, we'll move on to the review of the minutes from August 21st meeting.
I didn't see any problems. I did appreciate on page four, there was a paragraph to vote into our discussion of invasive species plans.
It's a problem.
It is a problem, it's true.
Make a motion to accept the minutes that August 21st.
Second.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions?
Stay.
All right, excellent.
We can pass with three, I guess that's majority.
And it's passed with majority, right?
Yep, just a majority of those voting.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Joseph, do we have, or are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda tonight? Anyone online with us tonight? Doesn't appear so. Joseph, any communications received?
Couple of updates, relatively quick here, just in regards to the information in front of you. There is a small tweak to the zoning amendment draft language that deals with changes corresponding to recently passed state laws. And you will find that on one, two, three, four, five, on the sixth page of that, under 416 to H Avery, a great catch there, that related to the parking spaces required for a single-family dwelling unit as referenced in the ADU section. We can certainly talk about that if folks would like to, but just to note that that is, that update is reflected in the documents on the table here, but not in the packet. We have also a final roundup from New Hampshire Municipal Association of those legislative changes, which should mirror what we've been talking about, but it's their kind of end-of-year summary, so that's also there if anybody wants just a last quick breakdown of all of the different zoning-related changes that have been made. And there are a good number of them, so it doesn't hurt to take a look, but again, mostly just summarizing things that we've been speaking about here on the board. Update with regards to the 10-year plan. I did have a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, that is a committee of Lakes Region Planning Commission, and we did hear an update from DOT Commissioner Bill Watson about what I had mentioned at the previous meeting, the fact that in order to basically bring the 10-year plan into fiscal constraint under current revenue projections for the state, the DOT draft 10-year plan proposes cutting 49 projects, and these are the municipally-advanced projects, not, you know, specifically those that went from a town to a regional planning commission and were signed into law after approval by the governor and council. So these are priority projects, statewide priority projects, that are essentially being cut in half, the list here, including Smithbridge Road intersection improvements that is proposed in this draft to be completely removed. And there is also a proposal not to include any of the new projects that were proposed this year, so also not including North Main Street, the sidewalk improvements there. So in order to keep it brief, I'll just mention that the next real opportunity to discuss this in a way that will be heard by those who are making these decisions is the hearings, which will be held by the Governor's Advisory Commission on Intermodal Transit, the GACIT, which will be held here in Plymouth. One of these hearings that will be held around the state, one will be held here in Plymouth on October the 20th, I believe, but I will confirm that date once DOT has released their final list of hearings. But we do understand that it will be at the library on that date with the asterisk that DOT has not yet actually sent out a document confirming that, that date. But, you know, it's a, it's a time for folks to weigh in. DOT had, they were, they were tasked with drawing up a draft that, that cut, you know, an amount of, of funding out of the plan. This was their proposal for dealing with that. Could there have been other ways? Potentially. Anyway, that GACIT hearing is, is an opportunity to weigh in on that, and certainly we'll keep working on our end as well, you know, and here in Town Hall, Scott and myself have been in close contact about this.
Can you repeat the information about the date?
Absolutely. October 20th, I believe at 6:00 PM, and I believe at the P's Public Library. However, the exact time is, is not confirmed, and DOT has actually not released their documented list, though they said they would by the end of this week. So we should have that list out this week, but through conversations, they stated verbally that it would be that day, but that, that doesn't mean, you know, it's not locked in really until that list has been released, I would say. So keep that maybe tentatively on your mind as the date, subject to, you know, whenever I hear further information, I will, I will certainly share that.
You know, once you get confirmation, can you send the board to save the date for that?
Absolutely. I, I certainly will. And, you know, the last quick, not so much a communication as an update, we did receive two requests for conceptual consultations at the next meeting, but we have not received any applications. So next meeting is a business meeting of September the 18th. And, you know, again, we did receive two individuals who reached out asking about conceptuals, but no formal applications, so up to, up to the board and the chair how to handle that meeting, but just an update because, you know, it could be impactful in terms of scheduling for the rest of the year to have potentially some additional time at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I have on my list at this point.
All right. Thank you very much. And reports from committees. Sue, do you have any reports for Budget or CIP Committee?
Nope. My understanding is it should be about the end of this month we'll start, I guess. I have not heard anything about any budget meetings yet with the Budget Committee.
Oh, okay. They haven't been meeting, you guys haven't been meeting or anything?
I have not gotten anything on it, so I don't think, think so.
Okay.
CIP will be the end of the month anyway.
I'm sorry, what was that saying?
The Budget Committee hasn't met.
The Budget hasn't met either.
Nothing yet.
All right.
Coming soon, though.
Coming soon to a town near you. Any other committee updates? Joseph, is, is there any updates from the Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Commission? Any, anything happening there?
That was, that's the, really the big one, the 10-year plan update.
10-year plan.
That's kind of been the primary focus. There is also, the DOT Regional Freight Plan has been released, and then Lakes Region Planning Commission is also working on their draft Regional Transportation Plan, which is fairly important, you know, to keep an eye on. We haven't seen the draft yet, but we expect they'll release it in the next couple of months, and then, once they've released that draft, I think it would be certainly valuable to look at. It's more analogous to the 10-year plan, where they're looking at regional transportation issues, and in particular, areas of concern, potential projects to advance. It's a good source of support for projects that the town wants to see put into a 10-year plan, or other funding source to say it's a regional priority through this other designation process that does not always, you know, it may not be as specifically tied to a particular revenue source as the 10-year plan. The 10-year plan, you know, the advantage of the 10-year plan and going through that process is typically, those projects are all funded, you know, by DOT, they're on state roads, so that's why towns go through the, the effort to, to get on that plan. And this document is a little more analogous to a master plan, though it may have some ties to, to funding sources, it's more of a vision for transportation in the region, and should include a list of what sort of the top priority projects are. Also, I did receive an update, or inquiry, from an individual from the Bristol, who represents Bristol at Lakes Regional Planning Commission, who asked about having a conversation with regards to whether there could be anything done with regards to signage or striping on Route 3A, alerting folks to the potential of bicyclists, who I'm led to understand frequently use that route, in particular, 3A, basically from the circle to the town line, pretty popular to, to go up that hill, I suppose, and I'm not sure where they go from the circle, but they, they do come from the Bristol area and bike up to Plymouth sometimes. So they offered to, to help us with that, or, or at least to discuss that with us. I, you know, it is a state road, we can't necessarily do whatever we want, but certainly perhaps something the Select Board and Highway Department could, could look at with regards to whether there's some sort of pavement warning markings or signage that, that the town could either encourage DOT to look at, or, or help support on our own.
It's a very dangerous road to bike on. DOT narrowed it a few years back via striping, so trucks and oversized loads now have to be burdened of that, but bicycles have another foot. It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a definitely, it's definitely a tricky stretch of road, and the width varies as well from town to town.
Yeah.
Which makes it, adds an additional sort of challenge or complication to this, which I'm sure, you know, DOT would need to be involved in, in any discussion about that too. I would, I would have to assume they have some thoughts.
Like, any markings or signage, DOT would have to be involved, right? Yep.
Now, would they let the town do something if the town decided to? It really depends on if that's something that they see as acceptable, sometimes maybe, but ultimately it's their call, you know, typically with any changes to a state road.
Maybe we could form a committee to put a bike path through there.
No.
Right outside.
I mean, I'm sure plenty of people would enjoy that kind of thing. Hard to build.
Hard, pretty much so. Well, thank you very much, Joseph.
Was there any talk about the North Main Street Bridge at all, at LRPC?
So that project is not one of the ones proposed to be removed from the 10-year plan, so that is listed on the 10-year plan, the bridge only, and remains so, so that is...
Is that a upgrade the bridge, or is it replace the bridge, or just do something with the bridge? Is that the...
So I believe the term used in the description is rehabilitate. So let me, let me see if there's any more in there, but I believe it is just a rehabilitation. And, you know, usually, the thing with the 10-year plan that's a bit challenging is that these projects aren't designed when they get into the 10-year plan, they're really, you know, they're a project priority that, you know, is listed because it's a priority. So for example, Tenny Mountain Highway, Smithbridge Road Intersection, it's a known problem, but the solution isn't necessarily identified, so in the proposal that DOT has put forward, the same proposal that cuts our other two projects, it does still include, let's see here, rehabilitation of bridge carrying US-3 and NH-25 over Baker River, preliminary engineering to begin in 2029, construction to begin in 2032. That is the, that's what DOT is proposing in this, in this new transportation plan, and they do assign a cost to that of 4.7 million roughly.
Sounds cheap.
4.7.
Rehab.
Yeah.
That's seven years.
Yeah, they just upgraded or downgraded the posting.
Correct.
Weight in the past couple of weeks, I feel like those signs went up.
Correct. It was very recent.
Yeah.
It happened either in early August or late July.
Oh, okay.
Bringing it up. They, they came to us and said they needed to downgrade the, the weight limits on that bridge.
Yeah, and let me ask you guys this, who enforces, who enforces that? If like, someone were to go over it, is that just like a, a police officer or law enforcement has to be there and know the weight of the vehicle? The only reason I ask is because I've seen multiple vehicles where I'm like, that definitely weighs more than...
I suspect if the bridge was to collapse, that person would be liable.
Oof, yeah.
It's also just part, part of the whole thing, but I'm not sure, I would assume at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting. No, I'd, I'd have noticed those signs.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of weight.
And we get a, we're allowed to take our emergency vehicles...
Apparatuses and stuff.
...that cross it as long as no other vehicle is on the bridge at the same time.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Which makes sense if you're...
And we've advised the surrounding communities of the same, if they are responding to something in Plymouth, they need to be careful with that bridge and...
Make sure there's no one else, no other...
If there's anyone else on it when they go across it.
What's the current, what's the weight limit now?
10 tons.
Oh.
20,000 pounds.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
No.
And the only other update that I have from that Transportation Advisory Committee meeting is that there is a group called the New Hampshire Bike Walk Alliance that is advocating for a change to state law, which would allow select boards of municipalities to lower speed limits on certain urban residential or business district streets to 20 miles an hour, whereas currently you can only lower it to 25 under that provision. You do, in order to lower the speed limit beyond what's outlined in RSA on a municipal street, need a speed study, and that can look a lot of different ways. In fact, there really isn't a lot of definition, that's part of what the discussion centered around as well at this meeting, little definition as to what exactly is necessary, because DOT doesn't review these speed studies. These are considered by the Select Board of the town in deciding whether to lower a speed limit, and by law you have to have one, but there's little parameter for what that has to entail, and this would be a local option, so a select board could vote if this law change went through to lower the speed limit as low as 20 in certain types of neighborhoods.
Interesting.
And that's, you know, hard to say, you know, they, they could, you know...
Is that a proposed law?
Yep, this group is advocating for it, and they spoke to the committee about their, their planned advocacy. You know, with it being a local option, it didn't seem like there was a great deal of concern or anything. I think the general reception at the Lakes Region Planning Commission was that it's a, it's a fine option for towns to have in, in certain circumstances, though acknowledging that factors other than speed limits are often more important in controlling how fast a vehicle goes down a street than the speed limit itself. If you lower the speed limit to 20 on a street that was designed to 40, to accommodate vehicles going 40, that alone has, has only so much impact. But, you know, it's, it's an idea that's being floated out there and considered, and they're trying to engage, at least advise the regional planning commissions that they're doing this, because it does relate to local, as well as somewhat regional transportation issues.
Yeah. What is our current representation on Lakes Region Planning Commission?
So my understanding, I represent the town on the Transportation Advisory Committee. Steve St. Pierre, Highway Manager, is the alternate. The committee itself, the Lakes Region Planning Commission, so that's a advisory committee that is usually comprised of municipal staff who do specific transportation-related functions, but the commission itself, which governs LRPC, is represented by Bill Bolton and John Crist, with Jason Ninos as the alternate, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Yeah, and we had Neil, Neil was voted on to something, if memory serves me correct.
It's on the conservation...
I think he's been all-in on that, that committee, isn't he?
Not sure.
Yeah.
He may have been recommended to us, but I think we might have gone forward with either, either he was recommended into, into the slot that Jason's in, or the one that Bill Bolton...
Oh, because it would have been us that put someone as the planning board.
As a recommendation.
It would have been a recommendation, and the Select Board...
To the Select Board, then us to choose who's going to be on it.
Would make those, okay. So it's Jason...
It's Bill and...
Bill, John, and Jason.
...John as the full members, and Jason as an alternate.
Okay, great.
And part of the reason, like, the Select Board would participate directly, but the schedule for LRPC meetings is the exact same night and time as Select Board meetings, so it's impossible for us to participate.
All right. Great. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We will move on to new business, which is continuing business in a manner, with potential zoning amendments for 2026. Joseph, I see you prepared some information on the Tenny Mountain Overlay District, as well as the Fairgrounds Road Overlay District, uh, Residential Overlay District.
Yep, what's in the packet is basically a recap of everything that the board has discussed thus far for 2026, so we have the most recent draft of the Tenny Mountain Overlay District reflecting the comments made, and the dates on there. I don't, I don't recall the date, but the most...
June 19th.
Yep, so that, at that meeting, that's the most recent draft that we have of the Tenny Mountain Overlay. There's the corresponding map. We also have the Tenny Mountain, or sorry, the Fairgrounds Overlay, which is essentially unchanged, except it also reflects the last discussed change that the board had, which was to basically make it comply with the new state law by making accessory dwelling units permitted instead of a special exception. And then the last, or I should say first piece, is the set of changes which relate to this other list of recent changes to zoning and land use law in New Hampshire, so that's kind of a, as the board had asked that we provide a sort of, one potential draft amendment that the board could look at to essentially tackle all of those issues at once, that being, those issues being the state law-related issues. So this is a, this is a first look at a way that the board could advance something like that. It keeps changes pretty minimal. There are a couple of spots where I comment specifically that, you know, there may be some interpretation room as far as how to handle complying with the law, and that's ultimately, you know, something the board may want to think about, consider, discuss, but really this is a place to start with regards to kind of a minimalist approach to how we could comply with the changes to state law, though there are a wide range with some of these changes of ways we could contend with it, so I figure this was a, a starting point, and I'd be happy to, you know, continue to work with this with, if there's any feedback, recommendations the board has.
So the state law ones, the ones we're looking to comply with, this piece of paper, zoning and land use 2025.
Yep, that's the summary of the, all of the bills that went into effect.
Right.
That was provided by New Hampshire Municipal Association, and then the piece of paper with the red line, yep, exactly, that's the, that's the draft, you know, the draft language that basically is an overview of the different sections that are impacted by these changes, and a very high-level look at what could be changed to comply with them. As I said, you know, highlighting those in red so that the board can take a look at those and, you know, potentially consider if there are other ways that we could tweak these that would make more sense than just this very minimalist approach.
Were there any items that are changed in your proposal in which raise an eyebrow to this could also change some other things throughout our zoning, potentially?
Yeah, it's a good question. There's, there's a couple of areas where, you know, I think it's at least maybe worth thinking about. You know, the board has already really tackled or, or discussed in some level the question of whether to require first-floor commercial in the highway commercial zone. This current draft does not do that, because that was the, the request of the board, as I understood it, was to start very basic, without jumping into any really of those complex questions, but those complex questions are worth thinking about if the board wants to. You know, the question with regards to that is twofold. The board has the right to require first-floor commercial uses for residential uses in the multi, multifamily residential uses in the commercial zone. Multifamily residential would be changed to a permitted use in highway commercial from special exception. Now, that would leave other residential uses as special exceptions, which is what they are today. So a question that maybe we're thinking about is if we're changing multifamily to be permitted in highway commercial, what about single-family attached, townhouse style, two-family, single-family, or open space residential? Do any of those others need to change as well? Not by law, because by the law only speaks to multifamily, but it's, it's perhaps something to think about. And then jumping ahead a little bit, we have Section 1204.3F, which is additional special exception criteria for residential uses on the street level in the village commercial zone. While this is topically related to what I just mentioned, the actual reason for the change is separate. This section pretty extensively references whether the occupants of the unit are related or not, and differentiates the, the parking requirements on the basis of that. A separate state law says we can no longer differentiate between whether folks who live in a unit are related or not, therefore this proposed change just simply strikes those two provisions. There are two, that leaves two special exception criteria that would be applied beyond the standard criteria to residential uses on the street level in the village commercial zone, and it struck me that as I was, as I was, you know, drafting the removal of those two, are the two that would remain really getting at something that the board feels is valuable? Is it better to just require the standard special exception criteria for those uses? Or are there different special exception criteria that would do a better job at getting at what the board, or the ordinance is trying to do here? And...
And that, those are, the facade including windows shall be residential in character is the first one, and the second one is window signs are not permitted in the windows of residential use.
Yep, exactly.
Those are the two additional criteria.
Yep, if we take these out, that, you know, the first two, those would be the two special exception criteria that would be applied to residential uses on the street level in village commercial that are, you know, still in effect in addition to the standard criteria. It's worth noting, window sign is not defined in our sign section, or regulated.
Do we have to define that?
If we wanted to keep that, I think we probably should.
If we want to keep it, we would need to.
I agree. I think it would be worth thinking about, because if we're, you know, what exactly is that trying to regulate? If we want to be clear about that, we, we probably do want to be a little more specific about what that's trying to prevent, just because, you know, as you said, there is no current definition or regulation. Window signs are just not something that exists in the signage section of the ordinance, so we could change that, or we could change this, or some combination of the two, but those, those kinds of changes.
What do we, so the facade including windows shall be residential in character.
Yeah.
I want to discuss this for a minute, because I don't understand, I do understand, I just don't know if it makes sense. The reasoning behind that special exception is, well, it's residential living space on that first floor, if it's commercial. So we want to, this says we want it to look residential because of that fact, which I don't know if that aligns.
It's vague.
I think...
Do we want it to look residential?
Right, yeah, right.
Business, business...
House.
House. Business, business, I don't know. I can't envision it.
And what is that residential character look in this day and age?
Right.
No, I think that's, I think that's a really, I think that's kind of on-point comment with kind of one of the questions that came to me too. Typically, when you're regulating the ground floor in a downtown commercial district, when you're trying to look at what that unit looks like, it is a little unusual to specifically say that it actually should be residential, whereas, you know, having larger windows or recessed entrance, you know, more of that commercial storefront look really isn't residential. That's not what this is saying you should try to emulate. This is saying you should make it look like a residential dwelling unit, which I, I think you're right, that that is not what I usually see when I see other ordinances that are trying to regulate the ground floor in, in commercial districts.
I think it would be more, Joseph and I talked about this, and my understanding is that it would probably be wiser for us to regulate so that if the first floor was residential, it could become commercial again more easily. So, so that facade should probably look like a storefront more or less.
Yeah, this should be screwing and shutters.
Should be screwing and shutters. Is it transparency thing? I'm thinking about all the, we have on the facade of most of our downtown businesses, we have large-scale windows, and so we talked about maybe there's a minimum percentage of transparency requirement for the facade, so that, again, if it were someday to be come a business space once again, it would be able to be transferred into that use more easily.
Yeah, I would almost say that instead of the facade including windows shall be residential in character, I would almost conversely, the facade including windows shall remain commercial in character.
We could become...
And maybe not that drastic, but...
Well, I, I think maybe we could move away from using this word "character" that so many people have told us is vague, and, and could become more specific... that so many people have told us is vague and, and could become more specific or like give a window of, again, if we want to look at the facade of a building, how much of it needs to be transparent, AKA windows? You know, if, if you look at a residential house, a house could have windows that are, you know, teeny tiny and way up there, and that would be residential in character. But that would be, you know, ten percent of the facade, which would be difficult to turn back into commercial space. But if we required larger scale windows, basically, by that percentage of facade, it could be transferred more easily. Does that make sense?
It does.
We also talked about articulation of the facade on the first floor versus the floors above, which was kind of interesting.
What do you mean by articulation?
Right, so I also, what do you think articulation can mean, Joseph?
It can mean a lot of things when you're talking about facades, but generally, when you're looking at a facade that, you know, we can probably all picture one where you have a very large, flat expanse where there's no variation in color, texture, materials, dimension. It basically looks like a slab, right? Often, to break up the appearance of sort of bulky slab-like proportions, folks will use articulation techniques to either potentially change the texture between different floors to create pop outs.
Slats versus shingles.
Yep, use different materials. You can use banding or perhaps bump outs or perhaps even a recessed entrance, things like that, that, you know, can, can in some ways differentiate the, a certain portion of the building stylistically from the other. So often on a storefront, Main Street type feel. Again, this is a, this is a policy choice about what we want this to look like, but it is more common for on a, in a, in a more traditional village setting to have it be viewed as a desirable attribute, to have the portion that you pass when you're walking along Main Street be a little bit differentiated from the upper floor. So you might have, you know, an awning. There's large windows on the first floor, a recessed entrance, all of those things that make the first floor feel a little more engaged with you. And then, you know, the upper floors, perhaps they're stepped back, or perhaps they're a different texture. It's a, it's a common sort of technique to, to break up that slab-like appearance of buildings. You know, again, it depends on what, you know, again, that's a, it, it really is a policy choice to consider, but that is not an uncommon thing to require certain types of articulation horizontal. So breaking it up, you know, the long way or vertical, breaking it up the tall way.
So we'd be introducing a little bit like form-based code, like sort of.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a regulation of form. It would be kind of a, you know, whereas a traditional form-based code would look at form over what happens inside of the building typically, this would be a little bit closer, but not all the way. It, it essentially, it would, where we currently regulate the facade to say it should be residential, this would be thinking about, you know, a different way of, of regulating aesthetics. But it is ultimately a, a form regulation of design of the building, style of the building.
I don't think we'd have to regulate, you know, to a lot of detail about like slats or colors or specific materials or anything like that, to be clear.
Six inch board.
Yeah, no, that'd be, I don't think that's what we're going for. But I can see that that's kind of what's naturally occurred downtown, you know? And if we want to kind of maintain that, I'm going to use it, character, I think it'd be worth talking about becoming more specific in this very specific part of our, our ordinance in a way that, that is a balance makes sense.
I like it. I'd like to see some examples of.
Sure.
What it might read out like.
Yeah, so like, could you, can you use the word articulation and that is sufficient in law? Or would we have to become more specific?
We use articulation pretty extensively in the site plan review regulations when we look at building design.
Okay.
Those, I will say, are getting more at new commercial development than, you know, I mean, they're, they're pretty broad, but I'll just, I'll pull it up and I'll cite a couple of examples out of it. Things that we currently regulate through site plan, so again, are more applicable to new commercial development, would be applicable to new multifamily. But, you know, there is, you know, the exterior design of new development shall be coordinated with existing buildings. All new designs while respecting this collective effect will also be reviewed for providing sufficient variety in exterior designs as to avoid monotony in appearance. Attention shall be given to exterior materials. Quality long-lasting materials should be used in order to contribute to the value of the community over the long term. A minimum of three colors should be used on the facade facing a public street. Bare cinder block or corrugated metal should be minimized on any facade visible from a public street. All building entrances should be clearly articulated to indicate a transition from the exterior to the interior of the building. Every main entrance should have a special emphasis when compared to the other portions of the building. The ratio of the wall to window area, the ratio of window to wall area on a facade facing a public street shall be sensitive to the placement of the building with regards to the street, with a higher ratio being appropriate closer to the street. Massing, proper massing reduces the impact of the massive bulk created by large buildings that would not otherwise relate in scale to surrounding development. Vertical articulation, horizontal articulation, multi-plane roofs or awnings or variations in fenestration should be used to mitigate the impact on surrounding development and the scale of the neighborhood. And then there's some additional ones that deal with roofline and facade articulation for buildings over ten thousand square feet as well. So those are kind of a mouthful, but they, they, you know, that's, that's fairly, that's not uncommon language in building design regulations.
And that's in our current?
Site plan review.
Site plan review.
Yep.
So there's maybe some pieces of that we could borrow from.
Or, I mean, could we just simply say that the facade needs to match the requirements for commercial?
First, in the site plan review? Is there some difficulty because that's a separate document?
I mean, you could always reference it. You do have to be cautious that if the site plan review changes, that can be done at the discretion of the planning board where zoning is town meeting. So you, you can do it, though there is that risk of if the planning board changes the design guidelines, they're sort of by that reference changing the zoning as well. So you have to be a little careful in terms of how much flexibility the planning board should have to change that as opposed to the zoning through town meeting. But it, we do that with open space residential development, so it's, it's not impossible to do for sure.
I think that, I, I think from what Joseph just read, all of that might be a little overkill for this particular need in terms of the details about colors and stuff like that. But maybe it would be worthwhile to review those and think about what would be helpful on Main Street specifically. And I say Main Street specifically rather than like Chase Street, because we're talking about village commercial. But I don't think that we should regulate things on Chase Street in the same way that we do on Main Street, because they're so different in terms of.
And they're already two brick walls.
There are not a lot of change to do.
And, you know, the other.
I'm, I'm envisioning Main Street, though.
Yeah, yeah. But I do think we, we would have to specify, and because this is about residential uses on the street level in the village commercial zone, so Chase Street is technically street level. So we want to be careful not to like regulate Chase Street in the same exact way we regulate Main Street, since that doesn't make a lot of sense. Right? They're used so differently.
Yeah, I don't just, I mean.
Board members.
Right, I, I don't disagree, but I, it's a policy question of how the board feels we should regulate design. I mean, there's been discussion over the years that, you know, predates me about residential uses on the street level versus on the Main Street level in the village commercial zone, which, which language to use. Just saying on the street level applies to Railroad Square, it applies to Chase Street, and it applies to Main Street, where they fall within the village commercial zone, which is most of them. You know, it's, it's, it is, there is a substantive difference there in whether you apply it to only Main Street or to the whole village commercial zone. And it is worth noting, but it's ultimately a question of what the board feels it's best to do. And as currently written, it does apply to any street in the village commercial.
And that is that street down back too, where Rans is and all of that.
Is that Chase Street?
Is that Chase Street?
I think so. Is that Chase Street?
Chase Street is from.
Main Street down between?
Yeah, so what I call Highland Street extension, the piece of Highland Street that goes past Yamas, down the hill towards the, towards the river. The left-hand turn off of that, if you were going towards the river, that is Chase Street. That piece of Highland Street, that, that little piece going down the hill there is, as best I understand, Highland Street.
Yeah, so those areas too would need to, so yeah, Chase.
Depot Street, I suppose, though the only user of Depot Street really is the, the senior center. So impact likely to be limited, but you do never know and you don't.
You don't know what's going to happen.
Only of the current owners of a building or buildings when you're regulating. You want to think of.
All those areas don't seem like you would want a typical residential looking house to be built in any of those areas. It would.
I agree.
Look and feel awkward.
You're right. You just don't know what's going to happen. Everybody's got a vision.
That's true.
And that Railroad Square, that's another area.
Yeah. So some thinking to do on that?
Yep, let's contemplate that.
Okay.
And the other alternative, just to throw it out there, is that we don't have to have additional special exception criteria. The standard criteria apply anyway. These are on top of that for this particular type of use. That's the other route, if the board wanted to be less specific. We don't have to have extra special exception criteria for residential uses on the street level in the village commercial zone. So that's another way to think about it too, is, you know, as, but I think as you said, all, all good things to think about and a couple of, you know, policy questions in there for the board to, to mull.
Okay, yeah, and I think maybe if we can see an example of we would entertain changing that too. So I don't know. I, I don't know where I lie with, should we just remove it? Or should we keep an exception there? If we do keep an additional exception there, how detailed or how broad do we want to be?
Could we write special exceptions just for Main Street?
And then there's that other part of it is.
Right.
Do we want to identify just Main Street? Or do we want to be all inclusive to the whole VC zone? I guess what would be the benefits of just doing, or, you know, maybe not benefit is the right word, but if we just did it to, just to Main Street itself? Would we be doing injustice for the other streets involved? Or if we did have it encompass the whole VC zone, would we be doing, putting some restrictions on those other streets that we necessarily don't want?
Yeah.
To make things more difficult there.
Especially because down on Depot Street, there is residential already, and there's potential for more residential. And so if a developer wanted to build more residential and the, and we did have, let's say facade criteria for a special exception, then that area is then suddenly also beholden to that kind of thing. So there's kind, there's a pretty detailed level question here.
All right, and are we okay with it being, you know, someone being holden to it down on Depot Street?
On Depot Street.
Or Railroad Square, we'll say like.
Yeah.
Thinking that maybe fifty, seventy-five or a hundred years down the road, that whole area might look different.
Might be, it also, yeah, it could be commercial.
And it might look like another Main Street.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know.
That's true.
Seems like that's the direction we would want it to go, is more like Main Street than not like a residential road.
I agree.
Well, we have, this is interestingly tied to our application for the Plan, Plan New Hampshire Shiret. Is there any news on that?
Absolutely, there is not any specific news, but there is a positive correspondence from the people reviewing that with respect to Plymouth's application.
Okay.
I would say we should feel optimistic that we have a very good chance that they will move forward with our Shiret, and they have, you know, the Shiret for the Railroad Square area. They have even advised that if this were to happen, they would be ideally targeting, I would say, late spring of next year.
Wow.
They, they have their calendar that would really dictate that, but, but that's the goal, to, to bring this to Plymouth. They have not officially awarded us anything though, so I don't want to promise anything and, and have to say that, oh, sorry, we, we don't actually have that because while conversations have been very positive, we don't have an award letter in hand.
Right.
So I, but yes, we should, we should keep thinking about that. And I would say almost operate as though we were to do something like that, you know, to help envision what some possibilities for that area could look like.
Yeah. I mean, potentially, this is something that is not an emergency and we don't have to do anything about it this year if we wanted to, you know, wait for the design Shiret to help give us a vision for what this kind of regulation could look like down the line.
Yeah, in light of that information, I think if we can wait, I think we should because that could, that could change how we decide to do this completely.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't seem like a big emergency at the moment, so hard to keep that bookworm going. Yeah, fingers crossed.
Because we could strike the extra special exceptions and just do the bare minimum of what the state requirement is to fall in line.
And then address.
The details after this.
Details, once we have a better vision.
I think so.
Because what you just said made me think, you know, you said something about, of course, we want to think maybe that could be a new Main Street down there or an additional Main Street down there, not a new one, excuse me, misspoke, not a new one, an additional one. And it'd be interesting to find out how many other people also share that vision.
Yeah.
So.
We should do minimal and wait and see.
Does anyone else have any other comments on the resident, on this section of twelve oh four dot three? Before we dive into another section? Which I don't know what that section is. Does anyone have another section that catches their eye or?
Did we actually resolve the question about whether we want to require first floor commercial in the highway commercial? Did we say keep it basic as well for that one in the last meeting?
I think so.
That's what I'm remembering.
Yeah, the board didn't vote on it per se. There was, there were some mixed thoughts on it, but it, the general impression I got was to start with just what we needed to do to comply with the law, which is have multifamily be a permitted use in that zone. And then based on that, you know, if there was something else the board wanted to think about, we certainly could, but the minimum that we would need to do to comply with the law is just simply change multifamily to a permitted use. And that would be from a special exception, which is currently in highway commercial.
I think that's fine without building in other residential uses.
So then that question about should we just permit single family dwelling detached and attached as well as two family by right in highway commercial as well, since we are required to allow multifamily? You want to just leave that be for now as well?
As permitted by, as, as a permitted?
Yeah, so the, the question is if, if in highway commercial, if you're required to allow multifamily by right in the highway commercial zone, should we also then allow additional housing types by right?
I don't think so.
I'm kind of.
And that is what's reflected in this draft. That idea of just make the change required by state law, change multifamily residential from special exception to permitted.
I think the only thought I had about that is that there are already homes in there, and so would changing that reflect the reality of the zone more? Or would changing that deflect away from the intention of the zone because the zoning came in probably after those houses were built?
I don't think we're ready to start allowing like single family homes there.
Okay.
And I think I premise that off of like connectability. And I think I premise that off of like connectability, walkability, bicycles, walking pedestrians. That it's already a concern for me, like how people get around. It's like, why are people even out here trying to get around? And I don't, I don't know the answer to the whole big question. But I do think that, I don't think we're ready to openly allow more residential uses. And I think keeping this simple with the multifamily is what we're doing by state statute. I think if we did want to entertain like single-family homes, I think we should look at all, some more stuff.
I'm not particularly passionate about it either way, so.
Yeah, that's just the premise of what I was like, I don't, I don't have an appetite for it.
That's it for me on that.
Okay.
Section of amendments. Thank you for all your work on that.
Yes, thanks, Joseph.
Meticulous.
Was there something with parking that Avery had found you had mentioned?
Oh, yeah. So ADUs, the ADU requirements had previously stated, the ADU shall have at least one parking space allotted to it in addition to the minimum of two spaces required for the single-family dwelling. Uh, so due to the other change that's proposed, we can only require one space for a single-family dwelling. So this new version of this changes that to the ADU shall have at least one parking space allotted to it in addition to the spaces required for the single-family dwelling under section four eleven. So that way, instead of saying in section four one six that there are two spaces required for a single-family home and in section four eleven saying that there's one space, we now just reference, you know, a single-family home that's already there has to also have whatever is required for it under the parking section. And that allows for, if that changes in the future, again, the parking section, it automatically changes here without us having to go back to the ADU section and make that change again.
What rule is changing the number of spaces to one, or requiring us to change the number of spaces to one dwelling?
Yep, that was SB two eighty-four, which reduces the number of residential parking spaces a municipality can require per residential housing unit from one point five to one.
It's the last one. It's the very, it's the very last one.
And that is effective?
Now.
Basically next week. So theoretically, we'd have to think about that if someone brought in a housing development to the board. Theoretically, per this law, uh, we can't require more than one space per unit starting essentially next week, though it does create a little bit of a complexity because our current zoning doesn't say that. You know, the other piece that I did-
Does this also imply that the law previously was one point five?
There was a change. It wasn't all, uh, one point five, but there was a change that required, that was last legislative cycle, that required towns to require no more than one point five spaces for multifamily developments containing ten or more units or workforce housing. So that was pretty narrow, um, but this basically broadens it to apply to any residential parking requirements. And it brings down the number from one and a half to one. So it does, although I agree that this summary does imply that that was the, the previous law, which is entirely a hundred percent accurate.
Seems like that, I mean, not, not that we can vary from it because it's the law, but it does seem like that's going to exacerbate the parking problem we have in downtown.
Yeah, it's an interesting one because the parking, um, theoretically-
Dwelling units, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, of course, there's always the thought that if you require less off-street parking, it will impact the demand for street parking. It doesn't directly impact public or on-street parking unless a new development were brought in. And at the, at this time, we do not require parking in the village commercial. So theoretically, the, the status quo there doesn't change. If there was a nearby development, that could, that could change.
Do we need to talk about, um, the percentage minimums and maximums again?
It wouldn't hurt. I, I think that's a good, that's a good thought. If you want me to recap that, I can.
Yes. My brain has a hard time with this.
Right now, under, well, right now, under the, the current zoning ordinance in many zones, in order to have more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the parking spaces that are required under the section, that is, to have more than twenty-five percent more than you're required to have, you need a special exception. And in some zones, it's actually not even permitted at all. That would be the single-family residential zone. This change could present some real challenges with that if we didn't, I should say, that the change to one space per dwelling unit could present some real problems if we didn't also change that not more than twenty-five percent rule. Because as written, a two-family under this would, under the new parking standards, would require two spaces. As the, uh, you know, no more than twenty-five percent more than you're required states, you couldn't provide three spaces for that two-family without necessarily getting a variance in the single-family residential zone. So there's, it, it really would create some problems for, in particular, small residential uses where we would be saying that for a four-plex, you couldn't provide five, you couldn't provide six parking spaces for a four-unit apartment building, which, um, I don't think is, I don't think that was the intention of the no more than twenty-five percent more rule. I think that was to prevent, say, a Walmart from building double, you know, the parking it needs, having a huge swath of unnecessary asphalt.
And this is all zones except for the VC zone, correct?
Doesn't apply in the VC. Uh, it requires a special exception, um, well. So here's, currently, as written, in the civic institutional, village commercial, highway commercial, or ICD, you can get a special exception to go over, um, you need a special exception to go over one twenty-five percent.
What about ag and rez?
Ag zone does not, uh...
No, you needed a special exception in the ag zone, right?
So that would, that's a proposed, um...
Proposed change.
That's a proposed change.
Exactly. So that's in red. So in the, and that's, that's the other thing here that in the past, um, you know, we did, this says may grant a special exception in the zones listed, which kind of implies that in zones not listed, it's not permitted because as a permissive zoning ordinance, you know, if it's not listed as permitted, um, it's, it's not permitted. So what we, what this proposed change here does is kind of flip the language around a little bit and say, you need a special exception to go over twenty-five percent, um, in one of these districts unless, uh, you know, you're a use, if you're a non-residential use that has over forty spaces, or forty spaces or more. So you need a special exception only in those specific, uh, districts if you're going to go over twenty-five percent more than you're required, if you're a non-residential use that would be required to provide forty or more spaces. So where it is right now is in those listed zones, you may be granted a special exception to go over one twenty-five, which does imply through the text that you can't go over one twenty-five in other zones. So by flipping that around and saying you need a special exception in these zones to go over one twenty-five for large commercial parking facilities. It, it basically flips around how the, how the special exception requirement applies and says it's allowed generally, except in these zones, you need a special exception for these large parking facilities, over forty.
So these are the changes that we previously discussed. You've put them together here?
It is. And, you know, the, the reason for the forty or more and non-residential is that issue of, you know, multifamily requiring only one space per unit. It would be really tricky to subject that to any kind of cap, you know, if you have a, or even a single-family development. It would be really tricky to cap the number of parking spaces in a larger residential development of any type, single-family, multifamily. But, you know, unless we make a change like this, the, the development that we approved at the end of Page Street could not legally have provided more than, I want to say thirteen or fourteen spaces for eleven units. And I, I think that would be, um, not really what developers want. I don't think that's really what the town wants.
It's not what those residents would want.
The town residents want. I think flipping it around and saying, the intention of this, as I understand it, really was to prevent large impervious surfaces in very big commercial parking lots like a Walmart that sometimes were built double what was, what was really required or, you know, maybe not double, but sixty percent more than you need, um, and saying, if you want to do that, you need a special exception. You know, you need the zoning board to say it's, to agree that that's acceptable, rather than just allowing you to build any number of, infinite number of parking spaces.
So will they still, I'm sorry, I thought they, like, you would still need a special exception. Let's take, um, the two duplexes being built on Texas Hill.
Yep.
So two duplexes, so right now, we're making this, the first change, one space per dwelling unit because of state statute.
Yep.
So each apartment, each dwelling would have a parking space. So those four dwellings, they have a parking space per building. They can't increase that at all.
Increase it by one because that would still keep you under the-
Yeah, so-
So, yeah, sorry, they go to three.
Five for the four units.
So they go to three.
But not six.
And if they want to go to six, so there can be two cars per each unit, sorry, microphone, they'd be coming in front of the ZBA for a special exception.
That-
Uh, variance.
A variance under current-
Okay, so let's talk about that part. So variance can only be, one of the criteria is hardship.
Yep.
You're not going to be able to approve hardship to say, ah, three parking spaces, four parking spaces. So...
I mean, is that true? Could you, you couldn't go in and say, hey, uh, I'm building workforce housing and if I'm going to have, you know, a two-bedroom house with two adults living in it who both need to work and it's not more walking distance to anywhere else to work, I mean, they both need to-
And that's what I'm thinking of is-
I, I would think they could-
Okay, that could be considered a hardship.
But I don't know.
I don't, and neither do I, right? But that's what I'm thinking. Those are two bed, those are two bedrooms, right? So there's eight bedrooms and it can be envisioned however you want, I guess. But I'm envisioning it that way, like two, two working adults that each have a vehicle themselves and there's four apartments there on that property and there's, would be, and I'm not saying this is what needs to be, just envisioning something, there'd be eight adults on that property, each with a vehicle to go to work. And they would, not they, but the property owner would need to go, apply for a variance in order for that to be within code.
And this proposed change would say that's not applicable for residential.
Okay.
So this, this change as proposed would say, any residential development, you could go over twenty-five percent more. And for commercial parking where your space is under forty, you could also go as-
Yeah, so we've, we've differentiated by potential size of parking lot and use. So, so people with, who need parking spaces for their houses will be able to have them.
Okay, thank you. I don't know where I missed the part where we-
It's because it, it's tricky. My brain also-
And the scenario you just described, as of nine thirteen, is law in this town.
Right.
Until then, until the, this amendment goes at town meeting.
Right, interim though, after our two units goes away and, or two spaces per unit goes away on, on nine thirteen, as you said, and until-
Theoretically, this gets voted on in March.
Technically, that development, if brought in that time window, would have needed a variance for parking to have the two spaces.
But it did not come in at that time.
No, it came in before. Exactly. So well, exactly.
It's okay.
It, it, as it was proposed at that time, provided two spaces per unit, which complied with-
That's something to watch out for between now and March.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good sort of shoehorn things and very problematic.
Definitely.
Well, I, I feel good about the changes that Joseph made. It's tricky, but it sounds like it's doing what we want it to do.
Me too.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely.
Who baby.
And then the only other one that the board had briefly touched on, and I'll just mention it, it's, it's not requirement, uh, under state law, but one of the changes is that, uh, towns now must grant building permits on class six roads as long as the builder, uh, files a waiver of liability. So it takes the planning board and select board out of the process. That goes into effect July of next year. So there's one zoning amendment season between now and then. Food for thought, if the board wanted to take a look at the zoning of our class six roads currently, that may be worth thinking about because the fact that it's a class six road is now no longer going to determine, uh, your process for getting a building permit. It will be, you know, if you, if you have a, if you want to build a, a home on a class six road, you can just file the waiver and it does not specifically state use, though site plan review, you know, may be required for commercial uses. But as written, um, if someone wanted to pull a building permit, unless there was some other provision the town could apply, you know, it's, it's allowed to be built. The class six road does not, is not what would prevent that from, from being built.
Could you prepare something to put in front of us for that?
I could certainly give a-
Because I'm just thinking, was, is the farther part of Binks Hill a class six?
Yep, it is.
And also know Pike Hill. People have talked at the bit before to put houses out on Pike, uh, Pike Hill.
Yep.
So between Pike Hill and Binks Hill, um, yeah, I'd like some more information, I guess.
Yeah, I can give a summary too of what we have for zoning on our class six roads today.
If you're prepared, if everyone's okay.
Ooh, I don't really have much in front of me, but generally, um...
I thought you memorized it.
Not exactly for this one.
And maybe, and maybe we're-
Well, I appreciate-
I do think it's something we can look more into.
Yeah, it is. It is something that I would be happy to do some kind of summary or maybe a little table for you guys. But just a very high level, um, you know, Pike Hill Road is all agricultural, of course. That one's pretty easy. So, single-family or two-families, neither of those require site plan review. The board wouldn't have any say. Someone could pull a building permit for either of those starting July of next year and, you know, would be permitted to do so with just the waiver. Let's see, Hunt Road, same situation, all agricultural. Thurlo Street Extension is the one that's a little different. That is single-family residential, class six for a portion of it.
Is that the old Stagecoach?
Exactly.
Yep.
On the Cummings Hill, the corner down there.
Yep, exactly. Where it starts up at Thurlo as sort of Stagecoach Road veers a little bit to the left and then the, the, the road proper, Thurlo Street, kind of continues down to Cummings Hill. That's, that's kind of our other major one, aside from Binks Hill, which is also split.
Sorry, that abuts Walter Newton.
It does. And then Binks Hill Road is also split between agricultural and single-family residential. I guess we might, we might call the end of Chason Road a class six road. I'm not positive.
Oh, yeah, running out to East Romney Road, that is class, or I always thought that was class six. I forgot about that.
Oh, boy.
So those are our, that's our, my list at this point.
What was the name of that room?
Chason.
Out towards Loon Lake.
Oh, he's not happy when people come across.
Kind of like a crazy mountain man.
Man, I don't know where Chason Road is.
Loon Lake Road?
Yeah, you do.
Is it, does it continue from Loon Lake Road?
It's actually the beginning of Loon Lake Road.
Oh, what?
It sort of shoots off to the right. Loon Lake takes a sharp ninety-degree left.
Okay.
Chason Road shoots off straight.
Oh, I see, I see. Got it.
Follow that. You can go right up onto East Romney Road.
Oh, wow. That's a little corner I've never done, done before.
You should.
Well, I should go out there, yeah. Interesting.
But it's growing.
Is it?
These areas want to grow.
All right. Joseph, question, just for clarification, nothing that you had put together tonight and any of the changes were made by the town, but does the stairway requirements, SB two eighty-two, do I interpret that correctly? That there doesn't need to be an egress if there's four or less floors, if they have a sprinkler system?
No second egress, that's correct. Yep, so just one stairwell, uh, would be required for a building up to four.
Love facing that sprinkler system.
Yeah.
And that is, that way it is a building code change, so it doesn't, you know, I mean, it does impact Plymouth. It doesn't necessarily impact zoning per se, but it, it certainly is applicable everywhere because state building code is applicable everywhere that's adopted it.
Interesting.
Well, thank you. All right, um, ba, 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 where do we stand right now?
Can we talk about the Fairgrounds Road?
Yes.
So I was reviewing it as deeply, it's not a very long amendment, uh, I was reviewing it more deeply than I have before, and I, I was wondering, um, you know, the following, it says the following shall be permitted in the FROD, and I reviewed all of those uses, and all of those uses are already allowed in agri, the agricultural zone.
Yes.
They're not all allowed in highway commercial, which this would, this, if you look at the map, there's a small piece of the overlay that does go into highway commercial. So a majority of the potential overlay doesn't really actually change much.
And when we started this project.
Was it different?
It was different.
Okay.
And it didn't include a lot of these, then when we worked on the housing project with Barrett Planning.
Yep.
And made a lot of lot changes to like density and stuff.
Okay.
It brought what this was being proposed so far in line.
Uh-huh.
With exactly what you just said, where it lays now.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if this, I mean, I'm wondering if the FRO, FRO, the fraud, I'm gonna say it, um, so if it's really only affecting the highway commercial, is this a really important thing for us to address at the moment? Because I'm imagining, you know, I, I think in some ways I can see putting this piece of the highway commercial into, you know, changing the residential uses allowed because of this overlay makes sense, and then otherwise, the overlay becomes reflective of what's there already. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Am I imagining that?
Yep, the only, I, I would, I would generally agree, the only substantive major change from agricultural to FRO district would be the minimum lot size. So agricultural minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. The FROD poses to mirror single-family residential minimum lot size. So you could have smaller lots, but as you said, Matt, the density isn't really, um, it doesn't really dramatically increase the density, I would say, it just has a smaller minimum lot size, because there is, you know, more, more residential uses allowed in ag as well that are also allowed in here. So really, the, the primary change or difference between this and, and just having it be agricultural would be that you could have, you could have smaller lots.
Where is that in this text?
It states that, it, it's by reference, so density and dimensional regulations, area dimensions shall be in accordance with.
I see.
Point two for single-family residential.
Okay, that's a detail that I did not know about.
Permitted uses though, as you said, are, are already there.
Okay.
In the agricultural zone.
I don't know, so I guess it bears the question is, is it imperative to decrease the minimum lot size?
I mean, I can see, I can see how in that, in this particular area, which does have town sewer and water, and already has substantial housing development, and also, also has substantial open space reserved, it could make some sense. I'm not completely opposed to it, I mean, I, especially now that I have that little detail. And I don't, I'm, I'm not going to propose that we just throw it away, because I, I know it's been around for a while, and not everyone's here tonight, so, but I was confused about that detail.
That's all I have to say.
All right. I think if there are no other thoughts on this, we can contemplate if it is something we want to move forward, think about moving forward with, knowing that the biggest benefit of, I shouldn't say benefit, biggest change of this is going from current one acre to, um, one acre minimum lot size to instead mirror the single-family home, or do we feel satisfied with what is here now, and that we don't need to move forward with this? I think if that's the last thing on the Fairgrounds Road overlay, the, you know, the last topic of discussion, if you will, for the moment.
Yeah.
Let's start thinking about that then, and, um, maybe at our next work session, we'll re, uh, get back together on it, after giving that some thought. We're happy with the one acre, no, we do want to go to single fam, uh, single-family dimensions, um, or law requirements.
What's the?
And put this forward.
Unsatisfied with the way it is.
Are you? What's the single-family lot size?
So where you have water and sewer, that is town water and sewer, it's ten thousand square feet, quarter acre, where you have one or the other, it's twenty thousand square feet, approximately a half acre, and where you have, uh, well and septic, it's forty thousand square feet, or actually, it's one acre, and so it matches ag, when you have, uh, well and septic, it's just, if you have water or sewer, or water and sewer, it's either half acre or quarter acre, approximately rounded to ten thousand or twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other topics of discussion for the Fairgrounds overlay? We'll think about that, and reconvene on it at our next session, and potentially put it to a vote to go forward or not. Awesome. Moving on to the next one in our packet, Tenny Mountain Overlay District. Joseph, did we have significant changes from the last time we discussed this? Can you give me a brief rundown, I don't recall that we did, but.
There weren't many, there were a couple of tweaks, so, un, whoops, underlying zoning district is, uh, used to replace a specific reference to agricultural, particularly in acknowledgement of the fact that, you know, if the industrial commercial development district were ever extended along three A, there could be situ, you know, or along twenty-five out to three A, there could be situations where the underlying district for the Tenny Mountain Overlay is actually not only agricultural, it could include ICD as well, so this would change, uh, to say that, you know, if you're in the underlying district, as opposed to the requirements in the agricultural district, being those referenced for the, the uses that are not proposing to use the TMOD. There's also, there were a couple of typos that we missed last time, where we referenced still master plan as the term, instead of PUD plan, so we went through and cleaned those up. Zoning, underlying zoning district, instead of underlying agricultural district. The bigger one, so village core area, uh, G, which is, I don't have page numbers on here, apologies, I'll try to get those on next time, um, but two and three are where the, call them a little bit bigger changes are.
Those under G, correct?
Yep, G, uh, two and three, so that would be the part that relates to the village core. So a PUD village core shall only be allowed in a PUD containing at least two hundred and fifty acres. And then there's a new sentence that says, the layout and boundaries of the village core shall be consistent with the purpose of the TMOD as outlined in section five oh two. That was in response to some concerns that the board asked about if someone were to try and take advantage of the village core provisions in a, um, way that doesn't really achieve the purpose of promoting a compact village core, if someone were to try and make an octopus, I think was the example, right, where you have arms that reach all here and there, and have little pockets of village core, that really ultimately results in the sprawl, I think that the village core was trying to prevent by encouraging a sort of more compact area in one place, and, uh, you know, kind of limiting the high intensity to that one area. And then the second part states that the board has the authority to determine the appropriate number of dwelling units in a multi-family building in the village core. That was something the board had asked about, uh, because it was discussed, but the language was not clear that that was actually the case, um, that in a, in a planned unit development in a village core, that you could have larger multi-family or mixed-use buildings, because the definition of multi-family limits them to six, so unless you specifically say otherwise, saying that multi-family is allowed limits it to six. So that's, that's that change, which, um, you know, again, those are both in the village core provisions, and yeah, other than a couple of other PUD changes, PUD plan, uh, replacing PUD master plan, those are the only changes, uh, from the previous iteration of this document that we looked at, which was, um, maybe, when was this?
It was a while.
It was a month ago or so, two months ago, maybe.
It's been July. I noticed something, um, under section E, the permitted uses list.
Section E.
And then there's number four, under section E, which is residential uses in village core area only. There's F, fractional unit, ownership units, and there's also H, timeshare or fractional ownership units. Is that redundant? Or should that just be one item?
This was E, permitted uses in the overlay.
Uh, yes, so E, permitted uses.
Residential uses.
And then number four under E.
Number four, sorry, that's what I missed.
And then under number four, F and H, F says fractional ownership units.
Timeshare or fractional.
Okay, so this is.
And H says timeshare or fractional.
Village core only fractional ownership and timeshare. And he's saying the, that potentially is redundant.
Is that redundant? Joseph, do you think that's redundant?
Uh, yes, I do actually, I think that, I think when we look at the definitions that are proposed to be added.
That's the other thing, yeah.
Fractional ownership units is a definition, um, timeshares is not included in that list of definitions.
It's interesting, yes, I noticed that.
And as I read that fractional ownership unit definition, it seems to me that it probably covers timeshare, um, and I'm not sure why you would have fractional ownership unit and timeshare fractional ownership unit, because fractional ownership unit is clear that whereby, or joint venture, blah, 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 whereby the owners or lessees have formally or informally agreed that the owners or lessees shall have the preferred or exclusive use during specified periods of time.
Yeah, I think that's a timeshare.
That, that, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we could probably just take.
Strike H.
From the language. I also thought it would be worthwhile, we touched on this conversation a while ago, and I just want to bring it up again, I'm kind of so-so about it, but when we think about the business uses that we are comfortable with in the overlay district, and I feel like, Sir Michael, you talked about, we, you touched on this, because I brought this up once about the manufacturing of two hundred, manufacturing as a use and warehouse as a use, which we don't specify a size here. I felt very comfortable with all of the other proposed business uses that are in this list, and the only time that I kind of went, huh, was less comfortable was in H and R, under business uses.
Number two.
Yeah, so E under number two, yeah, sorry. What do you think, Zach?
That's interesting, for sure.
How big is Walmart, eight hundred thousand square feet?
It's about one hundred thousand.
Whoa.
Yep.
That's a big building.
Maybe a hundred, hundred and ten thousand.
I would use Walmart as my comparison.
Yeah, no, it's a good reference.
You want a manufacturing facility twice the size of Walmart over in the Teddy Mountain Overlay District?
That's what I, that's how, that's how it helps me, is I can visualize something.
No, it doesn't seem like you live on that.
This, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, but I feel like you said something about.
Yeah, it's extremely large.
We don't want, we all, you know, we don't want to completely limit.
It might be important to still have it.
As a, as a use, you mean?
Yep.
That changed the size.
Yep, and I think you brought a good, good point, should warehouse also have a size on it? What if you had a four hundred thousand square foot warehouse, it'd be four times the size of Walmart.
I think we should limit the size, up there, you don't want that size of a building. Two hundred square, two hundred thousand square feet.
My only, my only question is, is there, I mean, I just don't know enough about the realities of manufacturing to know, is it unrealistic to have a manufacturing building less than a two hundred square feet?
Good question.
I'm gonna put.
Do you have an answer to that?
Does this area have?
Any manufacturing they're doing?
We have the size to want that.
Make it spatulas, you don't need that big.
Right, so there's a question, like, if we limit the size, is it even viable as a use? Or, and if it's not viable at the size that we are comfortable with, is it a viable use in the zone, generally?
In this area, I mean.
In this area.
If you go two hundred thousand square feet or three hundred thousand square feet in this area, I mean.
It's hard to imagine.
This is not a big area, and what's going to be there?
Or even like burned up and, like, they're not that big.
It just seems excessive.
Um, what, do you recall what derived or what dictated that number originally?
I don't recall what that specific number came from, two hundred thousand square feet, in my mind, is something you might see in a, a larger scale business manufacturing park, something like, uh, you might see in Portsmouth or London Dairy, so those, those large sc, I mean, I think when I had done a little bit of research, the Sig Sauer facility is right about two hundred thousand square feet, if I'm not mistaken.
At Portsmouth.
Yeah, that's in the P's Trade Board area, so.
How many is the Hitchner building? Because that was manufacturing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I doubt it's.
Kind of a reference.
Yeah.
That's gotta be a quarter or a third of the size of Walmart, maybe.
What building is that?
Hitchner, it's, uh, now.
It's that moving place.
Yeah, RJ Crowley.
RJ Crowley, but it's.
Oh, oh, on Highland Street, on the right, okay.
Technically on Hitchner Road, but yes.
It's off Highland.
Thirty-three thousand square feet, that building is.
Thirty-three thousand.
That's a third of Walmart.
That still seems big.
Mm-hmm.
For that.
Third of Walmart.
But also not very limiting, like.
I mean, I just imagine a facility that big, a manufacturing facility that big, that's gonna have that many employees.
Right.
Now, how are we gonna provide housing for that?
Right.
Because we just don't, Plymouth is only so big, the boundaries are only so big.
I would hope that if someone, I would hope that if the developer was proposing a PUD with that much manufacturing, they would plan for housing, but then we start to one.
It's a lot.
So, so there's this, yeah, there's a kind of net of possibilities that if you pull in one direction, I mean, that's, I, that's one of the reasons I like the PUD, but I did want to get down into that, these two specific uses, to talk about them very specifically, and do we even want that to be a possibility near Tenny Mountain? I personally don't really think it's a great idea, so. I think, or, or at least reducing the size.
So now, say for instance, the area that the National Guard Armory was potentially gonna put a place out there, how big a facility would they be putting in that, and could that accommodate that?
Were they gonna put, were they gonna put a facility out there?
Well, at one point in time, I think there was talk of it, I, they're not going to now, but, I mean, just an, an organization, or governmental organization like that, to put something.
I mean, doesn't the National Guard just do whatever they want?
I think they do whatever they want, right, but I'm just using that as a. They could use the whole area, right.
I, I have a quick, a quick question, if, if, if we say two hundred thousand square foot with, with the height limitations, so there could be a two-story ugly building there that's only a hundred thousand square foot footprint though, right?
Two stories.
When you say two hundred thousand square feet, it's not the physical.
There are still height limitations, though, outside of the village core.
No, sixty-five, sixty-five feet, I mean, that's still two stories.
Outside of the village core, is it sixty-five feet, or is it?
Forty.
It's forty.
Forty, oh, sorry.
Thank goodness.
I think, never mind.
You look at.
That would be considered.
Observe, that's a good point to think about, though, because i- it is true that a two hundred thousand square foot building looks different depending on how it's arranged vertically.
Infrastructure, not intended for human occupancy.
So.
I think, and I think probably what drives all that is, when I think of manufacturing, I think of one floor. Like, I think of, I don't think of a, I don't think of going up, I think of going out.
Well, it depends on what type of manufacturing, if you're high tech, you're gonna be multi-flued. Or pharmaceutical.
Right, right, and that's why I just think of like, what I picture.
Com manufacturer.
Might not, exactly, might not necessarily align with what is, what the thought is.
Yeah.
Still feels like you'd want to bring that number down to thirty thousand, or forty thousand, or something much more in line with our town.
Forty thousand, like an acre?
Which is still huge.
We've also, we've already got Walmart, and that's what hundred thousand. And that's what 100,000 you said.
Well, very roughly 100 to 110,000. Let me, let me double check what we have on the, on the parcel map for it. Okay, I, apologies, I was underestimating here. 149,000 finished area. Forty-nine thousand square feet.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
So, I, I was a little bit underestimating that, and maybe there was, yeah, I'm not sure where I got that. Maybe that's footprint, but, yeah, 100,000 is a rough, usually a rough ballpark for a big box store, Home Depot, Walmart. It's not a bad estimate, but they've, they've, they have tended to get bigger as the super Walmarts and the, you know, bigger, big boxes tend to come out. Maybe that's an outdated, more outdated figure than 100,000 for a big box. But anyway, still a ballpark.
150,000 square feet. So you mentioned pharmaceuticals, research and development. Does that, can we put in there that I can't use animals?
Can you use what?
I mean, you laugh, but that, it's a big deal to a lot of people.
No, yeah, I understand.
Animals.
Oh, that's a good point.
Animal testing, and you mentioned pharmaceuticals.
Yep.
And that's a big deal.
Yeah.
And I just, um.
That's probably very hard for zoning to regulate, even though I totally sympathize.
No, I know. I don't know if that's something that can be, how you can do that.
That might be one of the kind of difficult things to consider, that if we do want that type of industry to be in this town, that might be one of the ugly sides that we can't really control.
So back to the size of the building.
Difficult questions. I, I guess I'd want to do a little bit more research about manufacturing and, man, that's the type of thing that I would really love more public commentary on as well, to get a sense outside of the board of what people would be comfortable with. If imagining manufacturing in the town at all. Part of me says, is manufacturing, what's, what's realistic in terms of manufacturing in our particular area? I don't want to try to predict the future, but it, it seems like it would be a hard sell to bring manufacturing here.
So, so, I think I beg to differ, and the reason why is because, again, from personal experience, it is an opportunity zone. And one of the big efforts is obviously bringing high-tech manufacturing up here, high-paying jobs, you know, forty, fifty dollars an hour more. And for a facility of 100 or 150,000 feet, a high-tech example is hydroponic manufacturing. You need a facility that big.
Hydro, what manufacturing?
Hydroponic.
Oh, like, really?
If the space industry's exploded, there's all these new industries that are creating, and it's huge tax offsets, and Plymouth is one of 28 towns, I keep saying this, that has a special opportunity zone tax break to bring high-tech manufacturing into the area. So you don't want to be too restrictive, and you don't want it to be too, you want to leave it kind of broad for the manufacturing. I mean, limitation, animal testing, okay, get that out, you know, some specifics, but.
So do you think that if we wanted to take, we wanted to leave the potential for a high-tech manufacturer to come in, we would need to allow manufacturing of at least 100,000 square feet?
I'm just, just saying 100,000's a good number, but I just, I hate to restrict manufacturing, because it is, like I said, it's part of an opportunity zone criteria to bring manufacturing into rural America such as Plymouth.
Okay.
For high-paying jobs. We just have to be careful if we're gonna narrow it down. Because if we narrow it down too much and high-tech companies don't want to come up here, nobody's gonna, there's no tax incentive to do, I don't know, hubcap manufacturing.
Spatulas.
Spatulas.
Well, I think not, I think there's three uses in the business section that I'm now questioning. What is the right size? And that's H manufacturing, L, R and D in lab testing. And I, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I just don't know. And R warehouse. So I'm just thinking like, what if someone's like, all right, we can work within the confines of 75,000 square foot manufacturing space, but our warehouse is gonna be 650,000 square feet, and it's gonna span over 20 acres, like, it's like, oh.
In some ways.
I think those three things right there might, might sort of tie together a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. I also think in some ways, you know, the other provisions in the document about developmental stand, developmental, wow, development standards and specific objectives. Well done.
What, what section are you on?
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of not referencing a specific section, I'm trying to get a little more nitty-gritty for you, so that, um. So under Section H, criteria for review of proposals.
Okay.
There are, um, number two, specific objectives.
H two.
Every PUD in the district shall, shall incorporate several of the following elements together. These elements define a plan due development and justify departures from standards that otherwise apply under conventional zoning. So it must be inclusion of, of, of mix of uses. And there have to be provisions for architecture design, placement of structures on suitable sites.
H.
Mitigation of viewshed, hillside ridgeline impacts, preservation of open space. I think these are all very important pieces that help me, help me mitigate some of my worries when I think about the potential uses. So I just wanted to point that out. I think it's very worthy for us to talk about size limits of uses, warehouses, and the three things you pointed out. But under the, keeping in mind that the rest of the document does do a good job of, um, of giving standards for what these types of developments should include, which with respect to the landscape that's there, the topography that's there, the natural space that's there. And that's very important, I think.
That's a good point.
I, I just want to add to that. I mean, it's a good point when you're talking about the visual appearance of it, right, but when I hear warehousing, I think two extremes, right? You have passive warehousing and you have active warehousing, like an Amazon distribution warehousing center.
Yeah.
Versus a UPS passive area where during the summertime, they don't need all their trucks, but during the wintertime, they do, so they need a facility to store their equipment. So it's one thing for, for, for having specs for a visual, which is, is great. The question I have is functionality of the warehouse definition. Is there a definition for warehouse? What kind of businesses are we looking at?
I think the warehouse definition would be in the ordinance. It would share.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, because the way the document works is any of the definitions that are specific to this overlay district are included at the back. And any, anything that's already defined in the ordinance is referred to in the ordinance. So we would, we, it's a recommended, all of these definitions would be added to our definition section. So we, so warehouse, we could look at what our zoning.
Like research and development is on here, because it's not currently in our zoning.
Right, correct.
Very last page.
Correct.
Facility for scientific laboratory research, investigation, testing, or experimentation, but not facilities for the manufacture or sale of products, except as incidental to the main purpose of the laboratory.
Yeah.
And then notwithstanding, warehouse and manufacturing is not in this amendment to the definitions, so that.
Because we already have it.
It tells me it's already there.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that for me, dear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
There's, um, a lot in this, so.
Yep.
So maybe the question about size of those three uses is something we could table again.
I think it, yeah.
Till we have a full word.
Like you said, it would be nice to get public input.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we can make sure, I mean, I want to be able to give enough space to make things successful as they possibly can be.
Yeah.
While we're still protecting the town if we may be.
I mean, one of the reasons I'm personally not super, I mean, if, an Amazon warehouse is not gonna come here because we don't have enough flat space to accommodate the size of warehouses that they have. That's why all their warehouses.
Oh, exaggeration.
Are in Ohio, you know? I can attest to that.
Joseph, what do you think about some more in-depth research on sizes of those three uses? Manufacturing, R and D, and warehouse?
Yeah, we can certainly look into it and see if we can find any information that would be particularly helpful. I think, you know, one challenge is, as, as Michael said, it is a little tough because it does differentiate depending on the type of manufacturing, but we can certainly, you know, either give examples of buildings of different sizes and types. You know, again, a, you know, 100,000 square foot car manufacturing is gonna look different from other types, but, you know, we can probably do a little bit of research and see whether other towns have manufacturing or warehouse size limits. I'm not sure if they do or not, or laboratory to that matter. It's not something that I know offhand, if that, if that exists in many towns in New Hampshire, but we can certainly do some looking and see if that's a common practice or if there's any typical, typical standards that come up time and time again.
Okay, that'd be great.
And honestly, Molly's point about the topology of this particular area where this overlay is, it may be a moot point just because of the topology.
Yeah.
And topography and also the provisions that basically say, no, you can't blast away the hillside to build a warehouse. Which is really important.
Right, because we used to say like, I shouldn't say we, because before my time, but in Plymouth, it used, a lot of talk used to be, well, they can't build on that hillside, so we're not gonna worry about it. We're not gonna zone that. And then technology evolves.
Yeah.
It's like, holy smokes, they're building on that hillside.
Yeah, right.
Um, yeah.
It can happen.
Yeah, they could build on the hillside, but they're probably not gonna build 200,000 square foot building on the side of the hillside.
And even if we got, and if.
If they did, it would be very interesting.
If we got, if we got a proposal that had that, we would say no.
Maybe not the best example.
If you look at the map where it's gonna, I mean, there's areas that it could happen.
But why, but, you know, like I just said, if, if somebody proposed, if somebody proposed that to this board, it would not, we would not say yes to that. I'd be very, very, very shocked if, at any point, residents of this town who have served on this board had a proposal to build a warehouse on top of Tenny Mountain and said, yeah, that sounds great. I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
I think it's protected, you're right, I think there's enough, yeah.
The top of Tenny Mountain's not in Plymouth.
Yeah, and it, it probably is, but I think looking into the size of it will be worth it.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Uh, for tonight, does anyone have any other topics of discussion for Tenny Mountain overlay they want to discuss? Those are some good points that we can research a little bit, and, like you said, Molly, in the end, that it might not, not gonna put a warehouse on the side of it, but it's good to look into. Okay. Let's see here. Moving on, where are we? Let me find my spot here.
Are we gonna do anything with that?
Earth excavation regulations.
Ward.
I am okay with not addressing that this year.
Same, me too.
Commercial uses in the ag zone, home occupation, special exceptions. Joseph, do you know if we've had any applications for any commercial uses in the ag zone at all?
The zoning board has.
Oh, I'm sorry, the zoning board, thank you.
Yeah, the zoning board has not received any special exceptions. Uh, let me double check. Honestly, it's been a quiet year for the zoning board. They, they have, kind of like the planning board, not received a ton of applications. I'll double check, make sure I'm not forgetting anything. There was, oh, the special exceptions out at Three Lakes, which is in ICD, but those were sent over by this board relating to the accessory structures, material storage bays. There was a special exception for a detached garage within the setback on High Street, so not an agricultural. There was a special exception for the community solar array at Pine Gate, which is in ag, but it was about, the special exception was needed for the.
Fence.
The fence, exactly, over six feet in height. And then, was there another one? Yep, so there was the special exception for a fence at the end of Page Street, the BICODE development, um, which had a special exception for a taller fence. That was extended. There were two special exceptions for the two, two-family dwellings proposed out on Texas Hill Road. And by my look.
There's a special exception for two.
Why do we do a special exception?
That was in single-family residential, so they required a special exception. And then the last meeting here was. Seven, one, and then. Oh yeah, another at Three Lakes, and then it's the special exception that was touched on a meeting or so ago with the, at the joint meeting, which dealt with the accessory dwelling unit tourist home.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's, you know, yeah, we haven't really, one way or the other.
I'm okay with letting that lie for right now. Everyone else is.
I am too. I think we have a lot of work.
I, and not bring it up so we can start digging into it tonight, but just so we can think, touch upon it again. With Judy Barrett and this round of housing we're going through, are we gonna be looking into short-term rentals at all, to your knowledge, Joseph? I know it was brought up maybe a few months ago or earlier this year, and if I remember correctly, the consensus was we're holding off on that at the time because we had expectations that when we worked with Judy, that that would fold, come into the fold. But I don't remember if that is it.
Yeah, I think, I, I do, I do recall that conversation as well with, you know, where the board talked about trying to get input on that as a part of the Housing Master Plan chapter. I haven't, I don't know what the status of that is vis-à-vis Judy. Then, you know, perhaps it's a good thing to remind her of that, you know, it's something that the board is interested in. I haven't heard anything from her specifically about it. So perhaps it would be good to, if the board does want that to be looked at under the Housing Master Plan, even especially as we get towards the survey and some of the next, you know, because I think one piece that the board, it was a preliminary discussion, so nothing was really hammered out or decided at that time about the survey, but the board seemed to have some support for doing a survey, and the question became, what would the questions be? What kind of input would we want to get? Maybe there's a question that gets that, something like that. I'm, I'm not sure. But all, all that is to say, I do, I recall the conversation, but I don't have any more information about that from Judy at this time, unfortunately.
That's fine. You know, we can ask her, you know, in the next correspondence and.
Yeah, I think, I think when we start thinking about the survey and what we actually, what the, we want the questions to contain, we can probably include asking the town about short-term rentals.
Good. All right. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss for potential zoning amendments? Looking forward to 2026? All right, perfect. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is item number eight, unfinished or other business. Any other business or unfinished business? Molly McCann.
The, um, six-word story.
Yes.
Situation. I've been so busy that it just hasn't been something I've been able to do, but I would like to, on this Sunday, go to Hannaford. I've been so busy that it just hasn't been something I've been able to do, but, um, I would like to, on this Sunday, go to Hannahford's in the afternoon with it. And sit for a little while, I'm going away from Saturday into Sunday, and will come back, so it would, I'm saying this because I wanna take it tonight. Unless anyone else wants to take the board, Michael, you're chomping at the bit.
Saturday, no. I don't think I have any plans to take it Friday or Saturday.
Okay.
I appreciate you asking.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Take it with you.
Okay.
When do those have to be all handed in, I have a pile of them, I just have to.
Great.
Bring them in, when do, I have to get them to you.
Yeah, the end date of the project is September fifteenth, so, when you get the opportunity to.
I'll drop them off next week.
Yeah, and, you know, definitely the, the mobile board, as you mentioned, um, you'll take it over probably the, the weekend, and. We as staff can try to get it some places too, if planning, you know, we haven't had anyone check it out yet, the mobile board. Uh, but if other planning board members have some ideas, wanna get it out there in the community, certainly let us know, I mean, we're, we're, we have it available. We'll try to come up with some ideas to put it to use, even if people aren't able to necessarily get it out as, as much, but that's okay, I mean. You know, it's there as a, as a resource, um.
I saw a nice display up at the transfer station.
Yes.
That Jim graciously accepted to put out.
Nice.
Much appreciated.
Challenging on a windy day, the board. One first, ride, but.
Oh, no.
They're doing great up there.
Oh, man.
Yeah, it's much appreciated.
As a little aside, I, uh, I went to Kate Cod for the very first time last weekend, and I also went to Nantucket, and I wandered into the public library in Nantucket, and guess what I saw there? A Barrett planning six-word story set up.
No way.
And I was like, oh, wow, she's everywhere, good for her.
Fill it out.
I did not, no, I just walked in.
Sign your name, Molly McCann.
I was like, well, I'll have my own, she, she gets one, one from me there.
You'll have to share that with her.
I will, I will share that with her.
Excellent. Are there any public comments tonight, microphone is all yours if you'd like it.
No, he's good.
I mean, no.
You're good.
No, it's actually me, thank you very much.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, hey, Ted.
Ted.
Yeah, hey, this is Ted, uh, no, this is Claire McCann, um.
Hi, Claire.
I just want a second, that I really appreciate, um, the comments about size of warehouse, um, and all of that, and I, I really agree that more information would be needed on that. Um, and I was wondering if there is anything in the PUD that would limit potential excavation of hillsides, or if that is already in some of the underlying zoning, as you were mentioning, Matt. Um, I'm just thinking of Chatteran Lane and our history with digging into hillsides up there to provide flat spaces, um, and I do think that would be a good thing to consider if there aren't already. Provisions in the ordinance to prevent something like that from happening on a large scale.
So I think the main premise of pass, surpassing the es- excavation regulations, uh, for this year. Was derived that the state has excavation regulations, as far as further restrictions, Joseph, do you know? If there's anything sort of built in to the Tenny Mountain overlay that would sort of have a control on that or not, or anything?
There's, there's that piece that talks about attention to best placement of, of uses onto the land.
Exactly, that's really the only reference that I am aware of in the PUD language, it says in that specific objective section. One of the things that you should consider is placement of structures on most suitable sites with consideration of topography soils, vegetation, slope, E T C. And a couple of other kind of related, you know, preservation of open space, natural vegetation, and other important natural features. But there's nothing that specifically regulates excavation, um, as Matt said, there's the state earth excavation regs, but. Nothing that I'm aware of that would, that would go beyond the state regs, other than these criteria that are a bit more broad.
Okay, I just, it might be worth, worth looking into any specific language that would really, um. Potentially ask to maintain the topography, not just keep the topography in mind, but very explicitly restrict alteration of topography to. Beyond a reasonable extent, or if there are, if there is language in other guidance that could, um, guide that language, I think it would be helpful. Um, just as a thought of keeping the topography consistent, or kind of thinking about if there is a lot of. You know, eventual construction in that area, what is the consistency across different types of construction, different types of developers, or some developers being really conscious of that? Are others not, and how does that affect the consistency of development across the whole, um, overlay? So I think potentially having language to protect the topography as it exists would be helpful.
Restrict altercation of topography, it's a good question, yeah.
Protect existing topographic.
Of existing.
Protect the existing topography, there we go, wow.
Great question, thank you very much, Claire.
Of course.
Or comment. Any other comments from the public? Cause there isn't more public. All right. Well, if no one else has any further discussion tonight.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zach doesn't wanna leave, he loves being in the planning board meetings.